Our precious heavenly Father, we come before you tonight to acknowledge that you are the sovereign God. And we ask, Lord, that you guide all the deliberations of this body this evening, and that every decision made would be one that will benefit of the city and the citizens of Apache Junction, and would honor your holy name. And, Lord, we pray also for the Rizzi family tonight in their loss, and ask that you shed your comfort and your peace throughout the family. And, Lord, we just hold them up to you tonight. And we ask, Lord, that you intervene in all the violence and the illness going around this country right now. We ask that you put a stop to it all, and that you bring us back to a time of peace and a time of being able to work. And thank you for all that you do. And, Lord, we come to acknowledge that we have all the blessings that we have because of the sacrifice of your Son and our Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Mayor Sertie?
Here.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Here.
Councilmember Barker?
Here.
Councilmember Evans?
Here.
Councilmember Rizzi? Councilmember Schroeder?
Here.
Councilmember Struble?
Here.
You have a quorum, Your Honor?
Okay, on the consent agenda, Councilmember Barker is going to make a move.
Yeah, I moved that the consent agenda be accepted as presented, and the meetings of the minutes of the regular meeting of May 19th, 2020 be approved, and that item number three on the consent agenda be moved to follow the city manager's report.
Second.
Roll call.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Unanimous approval, Your Honor?
For announcements and current events, let's start on Robin's side.
Yes, I would just like to express my sympathy for the family of Judy Holder, a longtime resident of Apache Junction who passed away last week, and the family of Theron Hanson, who worked for the city for 25 years, and she passed away on Saturday night. So I would just like you to keep them in your thoughts and your prayers. Thank you.
Robert?
I don't have any.
Chip?
No.
Gail?
No.
Jeff?
Just as, you know, we've been going through a lot of stuff here lately, and just want to commend all of our citizens that are out there helping other people through whatever means it might be, some financially, some just helping out, carrying, taking people back and forth wherever they need to go, that type of stuff. We've been, since the city, not the city, got to get that right, since the federal government and the state government told us to shut certain things down, we haven't been able to, our MultiGen Center hasn't been able to be available for showers for our homeless. So we've been doing that through the Salvation Army since mid-April, or actually, late March. In this last weekend, we did seven showers and served 27 meals. And so we're going to be doing it again on the June 13th at Salvation Army. Want to thank them, Genesis, the Community Thrift Store, the Resource Center, and Horizon Health and Wellness for assisting with that through supplies and manpower and such. So just thank you.
Okay, I have three, but they're all going to tie into each other. And the last, and it all revolves around the curfew that got issued, and it's all unprecedented territory. First, I want to commend the PD for the way they've been handling it. We're not out to, you know, to crack anybody down and, you know, write anybody up. And as long as you're going to work or going somewhere, or even if it's poker night, I had that call today, "We always play poker tonight. Can we go?" Yes, you can out here. Just don't build a bonfire out in the yard and dance around it and things like that. And the, our PD is going to leave you alone. So... So once again, thank you to the PD and the way the officers have been handling it. And so with that, there's good news. Our poor senior class has been trying to graduate now for months, and they immediately thought when this happened that they were going to call it off again. But, but they're not. The graduation is going to go on, and it's not starting till after the curfew. So just be smart and graduate and have fun, and I'm sure that there's not going to be any problems. So I just wanted to get that out there. So, city managers' report.
Thank you, Your Honor. I also want to add my kudos to the Apache Junction Police Officer and to the department. They've just been doing such a great work out there, and we continue to receive letters from our community of gratitude and also kindness and support to the Police Department and its personnel. They continue to receive donations of masks and other protective equipment that we are so grateful for. And we're grateful for our community for the great work they have in working together and watching out one for another as we pass through some really tough times as a country. But I want to say, great, great work to AJPD and to our community. I also want to say and extend our sadness along with all of you to the family of Theron Hanson, 25 years plus in our Public Works Department. It was a mainstay in the administration area, in the engineering department. And then also to Judy Holder and her family, Big Part, and her husband passed as well.
Yes.
Which is super sad. Your Honor, that concludes my report tonight.
So now we will hear the item that was pulled from the consent agenda. How would we initiate that?
I think, Larry, are you available to go over the review of the item?
Certainly. Mayor, Council, Larry Kirch, Director of Development Services. This is an item that came to council several months ago, was a rezoning from RSGR to RM1/PD. So it's a 12-lot subdivision. It's at the southwest corner of TP and Idaho, and a kitty corner from the softball or the baseball field over there at the Boys and Girls Club. So the developers wanted to kind of get moving on this, which is different in the current age that we're in. So they said, hey, is there any way, they pretty much had everything ready to go, so we got them on the agenda last week. It is a 12-lot, single-family subdivision. They had to go PD. I think they had one lot that had some setback issues, but pretty much standard fare. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer for it. It's called Coyote Crossing is the name of the subdivision. I don't think that's in the staff memo. Oh, it is in the staff memo, yeah.
We all were getting, started to get contacted today. We kind of were thinking that some of them were confused that this is not the four-story apartment complex.
Sure, could be, yep.
And then I had the question of, did planning and zoning deny this?
Yes, they voted to deny it. At the time, there was a, I think at that, even though it was in our staff report about the general plan and what the designation of the general plan is for where does kind of rural-type development start, which is north of TP. So this item, once we kind of talked to them at the meeting later, or after that meeting, they, at least one of the commissioners anyway, understood that that is kind of the cutoff, at least for the RSGR, is TP. So this is south of TP. Just to the west of this are 52 units that were built by Adams Construction, so again, TP. Once they kind of heard that, even though they had made their recommendation, when it got to the council, the council approved the rezoning and the preliminary plat. So what you have before you is the final plat. This body approved the rezoning and the preliminary plat about three months ago.
Chip, did you want to?
Yes. I also wanted to, you know, make a comment concerning this. Again, this is, I'm going to say, south of TP. And I met with several of the homeowners in the area, as well as through some of the horse organization as well, and discussed that this was in, you know, in not in the large lot area, though it could have been a large lot. But it's right across, basically across the street from the Boys and Girls Club, and it is just south of there. There is that huge development already there. And this just allows the, basically a continuation of it and ends at TP. And in fact, when I voted yes on it, I also made the statement that it's south of TP and it is not in the large lot area.
To the south is, I think, is it Quail Run or Quail Creek, something like that? Quail Run.
Right.
Quail Creek, I don't know. So that is an apartment project that was converted to condos many, many years ago. So in terms of density, it's probably less dense than that particular development.
It's a, it's a step down in density.
Yep. Any other questions?
So at the time that we voted on it, the horse, horse community organizations were not necessarily opposed?
No, they weren't.
Anyone else?
No, just to remind, that was back in December, and we had, we had a hearing. The P&amp;Z had their hearing and recommended not to do it. But when we had our hearing, we had some local residents come in and talk and express their concerns. And at that time, we did, we as individual councilmembers can't, but we spoke and said, you know, that the TP is the, kind of the north end of where residential, multi fam, not multifamily, the high res, the high density, higher density would end. And that's in our master plan, and we're following that. And so I think this will be a good addition. It'll help to populate, hopefully, the school, the school that is just right north of there, and just be a good addition to the community.
Within walking distance for any children that may live in it.
Anyone else? So this is not a public hearing, right?
Correct, and it's an...
No.
But we want a motion.
Yeah, at the time, when we discussed that there was a public hearing there.
It was, yeah. So we went through a public hearing, through a zoning at P&amp;Z.
I will then ask for a motion.
Your Honor, I move that the conditional approval of the final plat for Coyote Crossing, subject to last detail related items listed in Resolution 2021, be approved.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Unanimous, Your Honor?
Public hearing, consideration for application for Series 012 Restaurant Liquor License for Toast GOS. Jennifer?
Thank you, Your Honor. This is a Series 12 Restaurant Liquor License application. It is non-transferable. Forty percent of the gross revenue from foods is required to hold this type of a license. Our departments have responded with a few comments. The Police Department did find two religious worship facilities in proximity, but not within the 300-foot proximity. That is always a concern, so they're outside that limit. The applicants have not had any significant contact with the Apache Junction Police Department. And they also found that the storage of the liquor was in such a location that it would not be accessible by the public. Planning and zoning, the property has been zoned for this use, so it's properly zoned and had a past history of businesses of this type in that area. Also, at the time of the inspection, renovations were undergoing, and they did pull the appropriate permits. They do not have any objections. And Building and Safety had a comment that the renovations actually put the existing and life safety concerns in a better shape than the original building. Fire had no issues either. The applicant did say that they'd be present this evening if you had any questions.
Would the applicant like to say anything if they're here?
Yep.
It's a free plug. We would like to know...
Come out and talk.
We would like to know, is this going to be breakfast and lunch only?
Come up.
If...
Hi, my name is Blanca Villanueva Martinez, and it's going to be called Toast GOS Breakfast and Lunch. It's going to be your typical American cuisine with a Mexican flair to it. It's going to have a liquor license, fresh squeezed orange juice. You know, you're going to have your biscuits and gravy. We're going to have mimosas, Bloody Marys. I'm going to make my syrup from scratch. It's going to be a maple agave pancake syrup. And we're going to have, you know, scrambles, chilaquiles, huevo ranchero, so a little bit of both. And, you know, close by too, so everybody can go on and enjoy the other restaurants.
You had me at mimosas.
I'll be there.
He'll have Bloody Marys.
Joel, Joel and Jennifer, if they're very, very successful and they want to put on another shift and do dinner, can they do it with this license, or do we have to approve something different?
The license goes with the establishment, not the hours of the business.
So they could go into the evening if you, or if they want to have a special evening where they stay open later?
Yes.
And what is your target date for opening?
July 10th, open to the public.
Okay. I've been trying to catch someone there so I can go in and do a video for the community. So if I see you, I will be coming. So, any more questions? All right, thank you. This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to speak on this item? Hearing and seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Your Honor, I move that the application for a Series 12 Restaurant Liquor License for Toast GOS Breakfast and Lunch located at 1422 East Broadway Avenue be recommended for approval to the Arizona Department of Liquor Licenses and Control.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Of course, yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Unanimous, Your Honor?
Presentation, discussion, public hearing, and consideration of proposed ordinance number 1491, request by WGG Partners to rezone. Sidney, not Sidney.
Sidney. You probably would have rather had Sidney.
Not Sidney.
Larry Kirch, Director of Development Services. The applicants have withdrawn their petition for rezoning. We also got confirmation from the property owner that the property is no longer under contract for escrow. The Planning Commission did vote five to zero to turn it down. At that point, the applicant withdrew.
And I think everyone is relieved that they've pulled it. I think people, people like the project, just nowhere near this location, and...
Yeah, a lot of the comments at the Plan Commission were that some density, to have it downtown, you need density. But at that particular location, at the roundabout, it was probably stark contrast to, you know, current vacant land, of course, but perhaps there's some other better choices.
Meridian and baseline, or places like that even.
Yeah, and there will be seen, once the state land way south, there will be a whole mixture of different types of densities of uses.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I am interested in learning a little bit, seeking if the property owner did reach out to me afterwards and is interested in any type of feel you may have on that property in particular, what could go there. He's owns it and would like to develop it, and what density is it, single-family homes? Is it two-story? What's two-story? I'm not saying I know what he would have, or what a developer would come with, but...
A mini-low-profile resort with underground parking.
I'll let him know.
Where we can have bonfires and dance around.
You know, I personally didn't have a problem with it, other than I would prefer three stories because that location right there, in that busy roundabout, it would be hard for a business to be there. Single-family homes wouldn't necessarily want to be in a roundabout. But a high-density apartments, I would prefer townhomes or condos. But we need the density in the downtown area. And that is still part of the downtown.
Yeah, the property is within the downtown and the redevelopment area. Part of the property is zone B1, commercial, so it actually has, so it's four and a half acres, but I think it makes up four different tax parcels. Some of it's zoned RSGR, some of it's B1. Again, it's problematic. I think the way access to the property had to be kind of just outside the turnoff for the roundabout. Staff did suggest to the developer that perhaps four stories was a little too high, although it is consistent with downtown, and that maybe two to three stories would have been better. But again, the applicant, it's their choice to what their application reads, so...
It would be a good place for a hotel, not four stories.
Low hotel.
A low level.
Yeah.
Yeah, but they don't build hotels anymore. They just don't.
Hotel industry is a little spot right now.
Okay, so we...
There's a motion to, I guess, accept their withdrawal, Joel.
Yes.
That's all you need.
Yep.
So we need a motion?
It is a public hearing.
This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to speak on this item?
As you might guess, George Schroeder, 244 West Virginia, Apache Junction. All of this area has already been encroached enough. We don't need anything else there. I don't want anything else there. If you take a picture right outside of here, it's perfect. I don't want to see anything, anyone, but animals. Animals. That's what people want to see, not three-story hotels, not circus events. It's wrong. We're supposed to be keeping low density, especially east of Idaho. We already got enough people out there, and they want to make Mountain View part of their, their change course there with the corridor. I was at the meeting. They would love Mountain View to be part of that new corridor so they can cut off AJ, thus less view, more traffic, more undesirable types of events. Don't need it, don't want it, ain't going to have it.
Would anyone else like to speak? Hearing and seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and ask for the motion.
Your Honor?
Chip?
I move that council accept the withdrawal of rezoning application of case number PZ4-20 by the applicant Paul Proti and Marco Diaz. Probably blew his first name.
And, and no, no action? There's more to that motion. You have a separate sheet there?
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Just the last portion, and?
And no action on the ordinance number 1491. I'm sorry.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Unanimous, Your Honor?
Presentation and discussion with, on fiscal year 2021 budget and compensation. Bryant?
Thank you, Your Honor. Before I start this presentation, just wanted to take a quick minute to thank our department directors who have put together this budget, along with our budget team, Finance Department, and Connie, and Anna, and Matt, and Donna, for their great work. This is our first presentation. It's a work session item. It is not a decision-action item yet, but we have been working hard to present to you a balanced budget. Matt, maybe we can start on the next. I always like to show some of the highlights of the current fiscal year that we're in. As the fiscal year started off, we were able to do some of our civic events, Festivals of the Superstition in November, Lost Dutchman Days, an honorable event. And then some of our city sponsor, or community events, through Parks and Rec Holiday Event and Health and Wellness Event. Downtown signage went up, some wayfinding signs. This was part of our long-term plan to help enhance some of our signage in the city, in the downtown. In the area of Public Works, the .2% and HERF revenue that we have is going towards several different projects, as well as some grant funds that have come in this year through ADOT. This one is a drainage and cur, drainage ditch project through Delaware. And we have some photos of, these are almost finished on Southern from Ironwood to Delaware, and then also Winchester, Southern to 16th. Another point of pride this year has been the median enhancements. Back when we did, in October, we worked with some volunteers and our CDC. Make a Difference Day. I also give huge kudos to the coordination that takes place on this between Public Works Department and our Parks and Rec Department. And get a little bit of rain, keep it going there, and we'll keep moving inward and in different areas of the median. We also, on that one, got some sponsorships from our local businesses that helped compensate some of those improvements. Recently, through a grant with the Diamondbacks, we got some new lighting over at the Little League Field. Unfortunately, this year, we didn't get to see them as much as we've been working through COVID-19. However, those improvements also dealt with some of the lighting that we'll see that'll help with security, but also some of the infrastructure that was behind that lighting. Improvements to Superstition Shadows Park, just south of Southern, near the San Marcos area, in between the junior high and the high school. Some before and afters on the Ramada, some of the grassy area. This was made possible as we worked through in coordination... Some before and afters on the Ramada, um, some of the, uh, grassy area. This, this was made possible as we've worked through in coordination with our school district. You'll see on the top right, the before, um, all kind of dirt, and working through that now, or we've had one spring, and it's already starting to grow. It's amazing what the good earth will do when give a little water. This year is an every-ten-year opportunity for us to be counted. Say, we're here, and we are encouraging our residents, as it is so important that they are counted, every single one, so that we can have the resources that are needed, and I would say, owed to us proportionally, because so many funding mechanisms through the government are done through the per capita rate. So please, everyone, sign up. We will be, um, seeing, uh, here pretty soon, census workers coming into our neighborhoods, and talk to them, engage, and let's get, let's get counted. That will end, um, at least that's the goal, to end around October first. And then we have, um, been working through COVID-nineteen, library department, and this example, uh, is utilizing some, um, drive-through window. I'm very proud to say we're the first ones. We get sometimes passed up, but we had Spencer and Pam, and Pam have been able to keep it going. And, uh, we had this already in place when we, when, when the vision was that that might be a great idea, and we kept it going, and so that's been very popular. And as we've gone through time, and we're now in phase one, we've been able to open up some more services, some computers. Um, and the same with the Parks and Rec Department. They've been doing all kinds of great, different ideas, and, and, and programs are starting to come in. Um, pools slowly getting open. Some areas of the pool are open, as well as playgrounds, and of course, our parks have always, the, the ability to go to the parks have been open.
Bryant, if I could mention for the mayor and city council, I wanted to, to thank staff and the, and the mayor and city council, because the, it, it seemed like it, it was changing almost constantly, as the governor would, um, release various executive orders. We, we would have to adapt and adjust very quickly, and staff would put a lot of time out to make sure the public understood what was open, what was not, and then we have, of course, as a result of, uh, the pandemic, many people, uh, like police officers and, and others that are out there working, uh, even among all the, the fears. Um, and of course, we had to adapt on our budget, uh, approach real quickly after all this happened, as we worked with departments in January, February, um, on, on putting together budgets based on certain assumptions, and then everything was flipped on us in, in March, and I just wanted to add that to this.
Yeah, absolutely. We, we had a, uh, budgets actually start, um, in terms of proposing and looking at future revenues and how they may be developed in January, six months ahead. And it was definitely a different world in January and February, and, uh, so we started out with, uh, a certain way of thinking on the budget, and now we, we, uh, have what we have before you, which is a very, very, um, conservative approach to this, to this budget. I would just like to say, because of the uncertainties of the impact of the public health concerns that we have in COVID-nineteen, we, the city employees, and all of us here, the mayor and city council, want to continue the, the, the primary duties of public servants, uh, to the residents of Apache Junction, by seeking and to, to ensure their self-safety welfare. And we've, uh, given that guidance as a, as a mission and a perspective, uh, as, as our mission is to help that way. And so I would call our theme for this year's budget, um, preparing for the unknown. So, uh, Matt, let's talk a little bit, and, and well, let's go back to that slide. We know that the GDP is expected to be a negative three percent next year. The variance between what it was last year was a two-point-five increase, so the, 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 the delta, or that variance, is a, a significant five-and-a-half percent. Um, state estimates, uh, revenue loss about a billion, which is to them about a ten percent, uh, number. And, uh, our local sales tax, um, because of that, needs to be held flat, budget to budget. Now, we don't know yet. We've only had three months of some revenue coming in. Um, we are very interested in tracking, um, monthly. We get our revenues, you know, from the state, and we will keep tracking that and keeping you posted on a month-to-month basis, um, on how revenues go once we start the fiscal year. What's included, uh, in the budget, it, our mandated costs related to retirement increases. Um, the city, uh, is able to cover the increases, um, at this point, for health benefit costs. Uh, our police department, um, is a much-needed, uh, capital project in the dispatch center to be remodeled. Um, we also have our continuation. If you remember during the recession, we stopped doing these types of investments that we got behind, uh, with fleet, ten fleet replacements, eight police, one pause and clause, and one in parks. Um, let's see, we, we also have three new positions, um, a co-compliance manager, um, the environmental program specialist. This position, you may recall, is, is connected to the, uh, trash, um, hauling, solid waste, um, uh, change and contract. This allows for us to have a person to be the regulator of both the contract, and also, uh, an educator, is kind of my point of emphasis in the city government, to educate our residents on how to, to move forward with that contract, and then we have an associate judge in the budget. The B L M land survey and appraisal services are in the budget, as well as the city financial software, the continuation of munis for, um, H R and payroll models. Uh, what's not included at this point, we will talk more about this in the CARES Fund, Arizona CARES. So as things, and Matt has mentioned, so much has moved so fast, and, and information on Wednesday night, we learned from the, uh, governor, and we'll talk more about this, that we have a portion that will be coming to Apache Junction, that was really originally from their, uh, the federal government for, for public safety. Two-point-five percent step increase was not included. We can, we'll be talking about that. Police commander position funding has been vacant for some time. We didn't, we're not able to fund that. And other positions related to growth and state land are not funded. Um, we've also deferred some capital projects that we think we can wait another year on. Um, the tentative budget, um, we will be, uh, providing updated schedules. Because of the Arizona CARES allocation that we just received on Wednesday, we're gonna need to update the tentative budget, which will be before you on, uh, June sixteenth. And we want to make sure we're prepared, so what an expenditure budget line item does is it allows for the, your legal authority to expend that, and we know now we're gonna be getting some, some new revenues through that allocation. So more on that one. Here, uh, next steps, uh, from, from a budget perspective, is the tentative budget adoption. Special meeting is Tuesday, June sixteenth, and with the final budget adoption on, uh, Tuesday, July seventh. Matt, anything else?
Uh, just for the, the public's benefit, all the line item budgets for the departments can be found attached to this agenda, so you can see by department, each, uh, line item and, and each department's budget, as well as some summary sheets. Because of the ongoing changes, you, the next meeting, there'll be some updated sheets. Department sheets shouldn't change too much, but, um, how we allocate this A Z CARES funding, um, will be reflected in, in the different funds, and, and we'll, keep you posted in detail about that, and give you a, a more detailed update at the tentative budget night. It requires creating a new fund, kind of like we did with the senior services, uh, a couple of years ago, so, just to ensure that we can track things and account for them appropriately.
That concludes my report. We're available for, for any questions. Any discussion or questions? Mr. Strubel.
Yeah, I'm, I, I'd like to commend the staff. They did a great job again. Every year, they, they put forth a, a, a budget that's good for the city, that, that serves the citizens of our city. They, um, you know, we have the three things that we're supposed to be doing. We're supposed to protect you through the law enforcement, provide some welfare, uh, public welfare and stuff through the, um, parks and wrecks, and all that kind of stuff, and do all the infrastructure, our roads, our, um, everything that helps the businesses, the individuals work throughout their lives, live their lives, um, hopefully without any problems, and the city has a lot to juggle. With all those things, with, as, as, as Bryant and, and Matt have said, a lot of uncertain questions. They had to change their assumptions, um, in March and April, and now you can tell, as of, um, June second at seven forty-five, there's gonna be making more changes, probably, um, because it's a never-ending thing. And it, I just want to commend them for giving us a budget that we're gonna be able to work for, or work with, and, um, help us to monitor it as we go forward and make, um, maybe some adjustments as things happen. Um, just, Bryant, can you just, you know, on the budget, you, as you said, our, our, um, sales tax collection, we're expecting just kind of a flat, based on that, but in our budget, the state revenue, we're expected, is just a little bit higher than, than in previous years? Can you kind of explain how that happens?
Yes. So one of the major portions of this, the city's budget is intergovernmental revenue, that is tied to state sales tax and state income tax. In the income tax arena, those revenues are actually revenues that were collected two years ago. Um, so for the community and for all of us, we're gonna see that that even go up next year, and it will help buoy us and, and support us, but two years from now, it will bring us down, because the income taxes go down, and I hope you remember that when I were there, that this discussion happened, because those, those will go down, even if the economy's doing better at that point. And then state sales tax is an, an estimate from the League of Cities and Towns, and we expect that based on some revenues, and then we believe that, that, that estimate is accurate, and then the next year, whoops, the year after that, it will, it'll be another hit. So that one will happen quicker.
Yeah, and then just to follow up on that, on the, what they call shared revenue, um, I like to think of the city and our local government as the top of the government chain, and the, in our, in our, in our, well, actually, the citizens are the top, and then it goes down into the federal, you know, they call that the swamp. But unfortunately, we have to, um, we are tied to things, decisions that they make on the federal and state level, and so sometimes, when they do their budgets, they, they, um, make changes as to what cities get, and so that's something, when they do their budgets every year, that we have to, um, deal with the consequences of those, and that, that's when we talk about the HERF funding, which funds our roads and everything. Sometimes, we don't always get what we as I, somebody says, what we're, or Bryant said, what we're owed, um, because that is your, the citizens' money that's given to the state, and it's supposed to come back to us, and it doesn't always, and sometimes they hold it back, and so I'm just gonna plug this a little bit. When you guys are out there talking to our state and federal legislators, make sure they under, they understand that we need the money to take care of our citizens here locally, so, thank you.
Anyone else? So for tonight, that's all the action we've taken.
Yeah, so this would have been one of those items on a Monday night, that we are able to combine and just do a discussion.
I do have one, one more brief part of the budget. As you see in the, the, um, agenda item, part of the budget each year, we also adopt a classification and compensation plan, which just details the, the job titles, as well as the, the pay scale. Um, and you'll see that attached to the, um, tentative of budget adoption at the next public meeting. Um, nothing's changed regarding that, um, except those three new position titles that will be added, added on there. Last year, the state legislature, uh, required us to start adopting annually this Public Safety Personnel Retirement System Pension Funding Policy. Um, it was done here by House Bill twenty-nine-seven. Um, we have a draft. We did not, um, change it significantly from last year, what you saw. Um, we didn't get it attached in time to this agenda, but I wanted to show it to you, just walk through some of the details, uh, just very quickly. Um, the requirements of that bill is just to adopt this policy. Because of statewide, it's becoming an issue of, of being able to fund that, um, public safety retirement fully. So we have to show, so the residents are confident that we have a plan to get to where we need to be to, to, uh, ensure that, that sustainability of that, that retirement system. Uh, we also are required, as you see there, to post this on our website, and, and we'll do that as well. The two main, uh, objectives, how the city will maintain the stability of our contributions, to pay into the system, and then how and when the funding, uh, the city's funding requirements will be met, and that means we get to a certain percentage of funded, uh, level for the, the system. The goal would be, of course, to be a hundred percent funded, to cover all those obligations. And that hundred percent funded would be by June thirtieth, twenty thirty-six, and we rely on, um, the Public Safety Retirement System to, to help us, set that date and set those goals and how to do it. We'll recommend approval. I'll pull it up just briefly. It's a one-page plan. And let me make sure I can find it here. So this is very similar to last year. You can see, uh, it, it goes through the intent of the law, uh, up in the, the beginning, um, explains what the system is, explains what our assets are, what our accrued liability is, the funded ratio, that's what needs to get up to one hundred percent by twenty thirty-six. So by following the plan and these goals outlined below, we'll be able to get there. And so it describes, um, what the council actions will be taken to achieve that goal, and part of that is this budget process every year, and, and, uh, go ahead, Bryant.
Well, and I was just gonna add, the reason and the way they do it is they add, they increase the rate every year, and so if you remember, it used to be twenty percent, thirty percent, forty percent for those, those employees, so they'll keep going up until we get to that, that funded liability.
So it's very simply, these two bullets are basically the plan, and that is that we're gonna pay the required and budgeted, um, contribution levels that are suggested from P S P R S, and also that the city council, uh, a couple of years ago, adopted this point-two percent to ensure that that funding could go towards helping us get to that one hundred percent funding, uh, ratio. So I wanted to, uh, share that with you just briefly tonight, and that'll, that'll be attached to the next, um, agenda with adoption, um, concurrently with the budget.
So our next action will be at the next meeting?
Yes, sir.
Tensive budget adoption.
Yeah.
Policy adoption and classing comp.
Yep.
Adoption.
If no other questions, we'll move on. Thank you. Presentation and discussion of public policy implications for long-range transportation planning. Larry, any meal?
Good evening again, council. Again, sorry, I'm not Sidney tonight, but, um, I'm gonna kick this off, then I'm gonna turn it over to Emile, who's gonna do the bulk of it. I just wanted to provide a little bit of background to this discussion about federal patent easements. Um, it's been a long time coming, coming up to basically making a presentation about, uh, what the city, uh, going forward is gonna do with these federal patented easements. Tonight is just an initial discussion. Normally, this might happen on a Monday night during a work session, but we're, we're doing this tonight. I want to give an example. Um, this was probably four or five years ago, Plaza Drive. If you know, it kind of starts over by the shopping center here, and then, uh, the city had given up that easement through the, through the shopping center. Then you go north towards Superstition. Um, north of Superstition, the, it's paved as a roadway on Plaza all the way to Lost Dutchman, except for two sections, which are F P Es. And, um, we, as staff, had got a request that, um, the abutting property owners wanted to get rid of those federal patent easements, because people were walking their dogs through there, well, because the people actually own the property. Horses were okay. It was okay to have horses, trau, treoos, and there were some washes there, but people didn't like bicyclists and walkers, and so they wanted to get rid of the F P Es. And I'm thinking to myself, okay, so we make this decision to get rid of an F P E, goes through the council, and then now we've made a decision forever, that because of convenience, now there's no way to ever put a road through Plaza for essentially two blocks. So other requests had come to the council. A couple of council members in particular had asked the question, geez, some of these requests seem to be one-offs, willy-nilly. What's our overall framework for having the council discuss when is a federal patent easement, um, not necessary, uh, for the city, for the future? So, um, that's just by way of an example. So, um, some of the council members thought that we should have an overall framework. We should have an o, overall policy context to how to deal with, uh, folks that want to come in and have the city extinguish the, the road rights. So these easements, as Emile will explain, they're multipurpose, put out there by the federal government back in nineteen thirty-eight, um, so that when the feds divvied up all this land, people could have access, utilities could get to the properties, and then over time, people come in and say, hey, we really don't want that easement there anymore, and the city gives up its rights to it. So it took us a while to get to this point here, um, and Emile will explain that as well. The, overall, I think there's a lot of education that needs to be done about F P Es, not just tonight, but ongoing, because people, you talk to them, either they're gonna buy a piece of property, and they don't know, a lot of, no offense to realtors, but they don't seem to know what F P Es are, and they're unique here, if you've worked in another state. They're not all over the valley, but they are in these areas that had B L M land that are now, um, um, private property that, that were sold off. So we're gonna walk through what F P Es are, one-on-one, and then I already mentioned that there seemed to be this lack of an overall framework. And then there was a, uh, traffic circulation plan that I think was done in two thousand and two or four, uh, by, uh, Kirkham, and that really didn't get to the level of detail that the city really needed to, to make policy decisions, and which, uh, easement should be kept. And again, I just come from a background, that decisions that you all make here have long-range implications. They have thirty, fifty, or forever, pub... They have 30, 50, or forever implications. So once an easement is extinguished, if we ever want it back, the property owner gets it. They own the land and so they might want to use it. But if the city decided someday that it really needed to put a road or a trail or something through there, we would have to buy it back. So it's something that we have rights to, but once we give it up, we would have to purchase it. So I really think that that's the idea of taking the long view. And then at the end, we have some recommendations on how to get to developing a formal policy. And then perhaps some changes to the current, we don't have anything outlined tonight, but perhaps some changes to the ordinance that really governs how the council deals with with these. So with that, I will turn it over to Emile and he.
We're not going to go into all of those things in great detail tonight, are we?
No. Well, again, this could be, if you want us to come back on a different night and spend a lot more time, we can. You have the CARES Act and you have talking about noise ordinance. But it's it's up to you. But yes, we have about 18 more slides to walk through it.
We can come another, another night.
Or you can put us at the end of the meeting. You can put us at the end of the meeting or whatever you want to do. We're okay.
Let's hear a little bit from Emile about how he's going to shrink this down when he comes back. Or if we have an open night, then we can go into it in detail. But tonight, I think we do have some things coming up that are going to be very.
Mayor, council members, it's been a long time, not because of the COVID-19. Even before that, I haven't been here for a while. Yeah, I'll just say really quick that I represent a large group of staff that had some very passionate meetings about this particular subject. We are ready to come to you first part of April. And that kind of came to a screeching halt, so we're back here tonight. I am by no means the final authority on FPEs or rights of way in the city. I'm here just representing that group and being a voice for that group. And we still have some ongoing things. Larry mentioned, we do have a number of slides. I think it would be kind of difficult to really condense it effectively because it is such a great, large, moving target. There's a lot of variables involved. And to do it justice, I don't think, you know, it would be unfair really to landowners in this city if I were to squeeze this down into a three-minute presentation. So I'm willing to stay till the end. If that's something that you would like to do or if you wanted to defer to another evening, either way, I'm fine. I'm ready either way.
I would like to have a work session on this so that we can spend the time it deserves, so that we all understand it. We're going to end up having to make some very serious decisions on this and I don't want to treat it lightly.
We haven't had a true work session for a while. And again, here's an example of how important these are. The city's embroiled in, has been drug into something with the county right now where some FPEs are encroached upon with some escape routes up by Mountain View Road, which county could use those and people have built out in the easements. And so these these are very important and it affects downstream a long, a long way. So. We all agree we should come back and spend a lot of time on this.
Can we schedule a Monday work session prior to the the 16th, so that'd be the 15th?
We certainly can look at that. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, 15th, we can do it on the 15th, yeah.
Let's do.
Okay.
Okay, no, that sounds very good. Thank you.
Good to have you back, Emile. Thank you.
Okay. Discussion on the qualified use of pandemic-related expenditure grant funding.
Your honor, we're going to actually have Matt. He's been working on this. We have a flurry of information that came to us and and we've been working real, real hard and trying to understand exactly.
So, yeah, the governor was dragged along. I mean, he may have still not released this if we hadn't been pushing. I mean, all the big cities over 500,000 and the counties already have theirs and they're already deciding on it. And smaller cities were left hanging.
And smaller counties. Actually, our county at 400-some thousand actually sued. And not too long after that, we've got, we've got this, this new CARES Act coming.
And I know we're going to get into all this, but the timeline, what is the, is there a time limit? When can be the first and how long can you sit on it, leave it in reserves? A lot, lots and lots of questions. So who would want to start this?
Yeah, and so I'll I'll start it, Mr. Mayor. And some questions we'll have answered soon, some we won't because we got a lot of this information late last week. And it seems to be ever being clarified and added to and changed by by the governor's office. But those that receive, those larger cities that receive direct allocations, there are very stringent guidelines on how they spend it and by what date. So it's basically between the, between now and the the end of the year. The governor and his purpose, the AZ CARES Act, or AZ CARES Fund is what he calls it. And I'll explain that in a later slide. He's, his goal is to provide maximum flexibility to cities because he knows each municipality is slightly different in how and to what degree the pandemic has impacted the various parts of of a city and and its residents and its businesses. So we'll walk through some of that. So the main goal of this was to to get some information out to to you all and the public to start the conversation and the brainstorm about what's best for our community of how to spend what what is allotted to us. And we'll explain a little bit about the process of how we're going to get that from the state. So first, the the Federal CARES Act. That stands for Coronavirus Aid, Relief and Economic Security Act. As the mayor mentioned, there were some very stringent guidelines and money was funneled directly to cities, 500,000 or larger. And then to the states, there's a large portion to then figure out a way to get it to the smaller cities and towns and other folks. These are some of the requirements that were required of the 500,000 and above cities as well as the state. The direct impact examples, medical-related needs, public health needs, public safety payroll expenses. The secondary impact examples include impacts from unemployment and business closures. And and there's a lot more detail there. We're trying just to summarize it for you right here as we start thinking through this. So as such, the Arizona CARES funding focuses on this public safety payroll expenses. So here, in in discussing with the state, and they just announced this, I think it was last Wednesday. The local jurisdictions can receive this direct allocation from the state for a public employee. That includes fire, police, EMS, 911 employees, salary and benefits. So that that meets this requirement of the Federal CARES Act. So Arizona's saying we're going to distribute it to the city and that that will pay for those salary and benefits of those employees between March 1st and December 30th of this year. So each jurisdiction is given a specific allocation based on population. Ours is approximately 4.8, almost 4.9 million. So what we have to do next, and we're gathering the estimates and everything that the state's asking for, is that we have to submit what we've already spent since March 1st, 2020, on public safety salary and benefits. And then our estimate of what we'll spend through December 30, 31st, 2020. So we're gathering that. Once we apply for that, which will be much more than 4.8 million, but we'll show that, they'll release that 4.8 million dollars of fund, funding for our local jurisdiction. We don't have an approximate timeframe right now, but knowing that we're gathering that data right now, we expect to submit it very soon. So the requirements, we have to use that initial grant because it's essentially like a reimbursement relationship with the state. We get that 4.8 million to show that we're going to use it for that. And this is the key. This is a statement, we're quoting the governor's staff, "Once the local jurisdiction has reimbursed the previously incurred public health and public safety cost, that includes that estimated cost through the December 2020. They're free to deploy the local resources to any purpose decided upon by that jurisdiction." So what we want to start talking about is how the council wants to start prioritizing that. And we'll go through some of the ways that the larger cities already have in in the spirit of the the CARES Act. And then and then start discussing among you what what you all think the priorities should be. Governor Ducey, his whole goal with doing it this way was to maximize flexibility, minimize red tape, and getting these needed relief funds to the local communities as fast as he could. So these are some of the local impacts. And Elan Valder, Donna Minertz, Bryant, me, Anna, we've all been trying to wrap our heads, Al Bravo. Getting information from the League. The League of Cities is asking governor for clarification. This is what we've boiled down as what we've seen impacts in our local community in general of the pandemic. And and you can see them listed here. Of course, it includes our public safety. They've been out there no matter what, right? They've been still out among the public when many people locked themselves up in their homes. So they still responded to calls. There's purchases of of personal protective equipment. They're in a hazardous situation. So so that's an obviously huge impact and and we have great people working. And and other city employees that still are cleaning park restrooms. They're, they're still doing all sorts of stuff, showing up to work. Our public entrances might have been closed in some offices, but we were still here working. The court's been open the whole time. You know, there's been lots of examples here in public safety and the city. They're listed on the right. We know the local impacts on our businesses. We know many have closed. They've lost or had to fire employees. And then they've had to modify some of their approaches to how they do business to be more mindful of of the health and safety of their customers and their own employees. And then, of course, the impacts on residents who maybe lost income through losing their job or just less work. There's unemployment. There's other financial emergencies that causes them not to be able to pay their mortgages, their rent, their utilities, pay for food. All those things. So these are just what we try to, we know it doesn't capture all the impacts of what everyone's felt, but we tried to boil down just as a one slide here, what the impacts have been. Hoping that to help you start thinking about, which we know you already have been thinking about this, how this 4.8 million can start. What programs, what, how can we do it? What, what, how can we use it to help our community? These are what some, Elan helped me put these together. These are some of the programs that we've seen from, for example, Mesa, who who got that direct CARES funding from from the government. Things that they've implemented or still working through. And as well as other cities around the state, the large cities and the small cities. So at the local government level, they always have a large allotment to public safety to ensure things are paid for and everything is taken care of regarding their public safety, first responders. Healthy buildings, this gets to, as you see on the bottom right, I get into a little bit about what healthy buildings means. So this is similar to what the businesses are doing. Installation, technical assistance to to create a safe working environment, to to stop the spread, to to protect customers as well as employees, as well as, you know, staff, all of that. So they've set up grant programs to help businesses do that.
I don't want to be interrupting all the time, but in a few months, that, what you just talked about, that may all be a moot point. I mean, it's not going to be like this forever. So as long, I mean, the longer this drags on, we don't have to waste money on that.
Yeah. And these are just examples of programs that that cities have been done, done with that money already.
Already, when this is still an issue. But six months from now, we hope that this is not an issue.
Right, we hope, for sure.
Could I get a clarification before you go on?
Sure.
My understanding of what you said is in order to receive this grant of approximately 4.8 million, we need to show the cost of PD salaries from the beginning of this to now and estimate what it would cost through December. But that money doesn't have to go to PD salaries.
So that that, we're showing, to satisfy the state requirement to the federal government, we're getting reimbursed for those salaries that we've either already spent or will spend. That will.
The reimbursement per se.
Right, which we already had budgeted through our general fund. Right.
But then we have the the wherewithal to put that in any spot we feel will get the most benefit.
That's correct. According, yes, that's correct.
I got it now.
And typically, as we go through what nearby communities, they're all still related to this because there's been such significant impacts because of this pandemic, that they they've been trying to still link it there and not just spend it on, I don't know.
They make some, Matt, they make some connection to the impact to the COVID, whether that was too priority like public safety and health.
But but the governor wanted to allow us to make those decisions and not tie it with absolutes as far as requirements. So it's, it is very confusing. We're, like I said, we're learning about it very quickly and constantly asking for clarification. I know even as I worked with Donna Minertz, our finance director, we're figuring out how we even show this in the the tentative budget to make sure that we can spend this. Calling the auditor general, calling the governor's office to ensure that we're not doing anything wrong and that we track it appropriately in case. They do ask, right now, they aren't asking necessarily for a report of how we spend it, except for that estimate and actual costs of the PD salaries.
They will ask for a report.
Yeah, yeah.
You bet.
So these, these are just some of the the ideas. We we know we can't all just discuss and make a decision on this tonight, but this is to get the information out there. What do we need to think about? Here's some of your priorities right now. And we envision coming back at a future date to start bringing some additional information about the ideas you have, how we might possible possibly do things according to what you all talk about. But that's essentially my my last slide is those, what nearby communities are doing.
Of course, we're starting to get feedback too. And one of the things, like with corporate bailouts, everybody hates when a company or business gets bailed out and they don't keep operating, then they just cash out and leave. So how how would we, if if individual businesses do get relief or help, want to make sure they just don't pocket it and quit anyway?
That's right.
Ensure that it stays open and.
Yeah, that's been one of the concerns that come up in economic development, for sure.
Yeah, so. Kind of watch my words. So the way, you know, everybody's known about the other stuff that our federal government has done, the the infamous PPP, the disaster relief loans, the disaster relief grants. And and as Matt was talking about, it's an ever-changing world. You know, work with small businesses and the federal government says, this is what we're going to do. And then the next day, it comes back and says, no, we're changing our mind. This is what we're going to do. And it's just never-ending. So just to follow up on Mayor Sertie's on that, so what the government, the federal government is doing is that as we're going to have to, as business owners, if we were to get money, we have to submit regulate, or it's called like a a forgiveness application to the government, which specifies what we use the money for. And if it wasn't up to the regulations that they said, which they're changing all the time anyway, then they can ask for the money back. And I think the answer to follow up on what Mayor Sertie said, that's something that we need to be very cognizant of because we, as he said, we don't want somebody to take the money and then leave town, buy a boat, start driving a Jaguar, whatever it might be. And so that we, we are very cognizant of what we're doing so that we use this money to benefit the people that really have been hurt. There's a lot of money being sent up the inverted pyramid from the swamp up to the citizens. And it's really easy to just say, okay, it's our money, let's use it without the thought processes of what's going to be happening down the future, having to pay it back and all that stuff. That's a whole nother issue. And it's just so, we, you know, I I've got clients in Mesa and Phoenix and not in Tucson, but with the other cities, what they're doing is is helping local businesses with some of the like rent assistance, utility assistance, obviously payroll, things that the federal government wasn't able to or wasn't willing to help, the real, real small businesses. You hear all the stories about the big businesses, this, and the government calls a small business anything under 500 employees, which is kind of crazy, which we don't have any here in AJ. But it's very cognit, we've got to be very aware of helping the businesses that have been left behind. Either through the federal and state government not helping them or just not having the ability to work their way through this never-ending change and winding road that they have to do because they they're they're out there running businesses. They're out there living their lives. They don't have time to watch all the news feeds that are coming out and and unfortunately, listening to people not give the truth. So it's just going to be very important, not just businesses per se, but actual. So it's just going to be very important, not just businesses per se, but actual individuals that might be out there that have lost their jobs and haven't had the ability to get assistance through that, so.
Yeah, I talked with several, a lot of small businesses with that first relief package. By the time they got to a bank and started the paperwork, the money was all gone almost instantly. So it... I don't know of anybody around here that it helped. So I don't know where that money went.
There's been a few, but it's... But now that they got their money, like I said, that the government is throwing out and they're changing the rules, and it's just driving me nuts. So, yeah. Let's just be sure... It's on that. Let's be sure, not that we're going to take... We can't take a whole lot of time to get this done, but let's have some... Put some thought process onto this. I don't know if we're going to be bringing this back in two weeks, maybe, when we do the...
That's going to take some time.
Okay.
So I don't know from an accounting standpoint when we will be able to recognize the revenue. So from my perspective, right now, this is an allocation that we're still trying to figure out the cash flow. Maybe that's the best way to say it. We're still at the very beginnings, infancy part. It's going to take some time. I'm going to be interested in hearing... We definitely want to bring it back as soon as we can, but in my mind, it's going to take a couple of meetings Monday nights, trying to decipher a good plan, policy objectives like, for example, the original intent of the COVID. What was the intent of the CARES Act? And does that intent match our goals and objectives of something like that? So just want to keep us remembering where this money was intended to go to.
Brian, I don't necessarily trust any government. So right now, there's $4.8 million. How do we know that we're still dragging our feet on this six months from now? Oh, it's all gone now. How do we lock this in? How do we make sure that it is...
Yeah, so we've already started. There's a couple of applications. So we've been through the... Maybe explain that.
Yeah, and so the governor's office explained in detail in their first press release.
Well, the governor's office has been known to take funds from us also.
Yeah, yeah. And so we followed every step so far. Now we're doing the estimated costs, and they have a process of that, that... Well, we're finalizing... I should say, we're finalizing the estimated costs. We're going to submit those as the governor's office have asked. And then, like Brian said, we don't know exactly how long that takes to then get it reimbursed. But concurrently, we're making sure in the budget that we're showing that we're going to be receiving that and that we have legal authority to spend that. In fact, we're going to put in more than the 4.8 million in case there's another relief package or whatever as a contingency revenue expenditure. So those are the things we're doing on right now. And then also concurrently, we'll need to bring this back and talk about these priorities and then start working on the program, programmatic parts of it to ensure that it's not wasted or wasteful. Did that get to your question?
So what you're saying, trying to... That this really is you're already into the process of applying for this grant, and you will turn this in to apply for the grant.
Correct.
And then it's up to them to get the money to us.
To ensure, as Mayor Sertie said, that we get that money first, and then we can keep working on how to appropriately spend it.
Got it.
Okay. Any other... Anyone else? So I imagine we... Can we have this on every agenda going forward so that in case something comes up, we can talk about it?
I mean, that's not... Yeah.
And if there's nothing going on, we'll just skip over it.
Yes. Yeah, so I would say we're working furiously as quick as we can. There's a couple FEMA, right, Matt? Then an Arizona document that's already done by the city. We're ahead of some cities. And then, and then working on the policy and with you all every two weeks.
I did hear from Councilman Struble and Mayor Sertie, you know, those who were impacting most, the businesses and, you know, those who couldn't meet rent or utilities, payroll assistance, those people who lost jobs and the impacts that had on them. I heard that as some of the priorities. I don't know if there's any...
Maybe I'll just add it in Mesa's case. Now, there's five governments that have done this. It's Mesa, Phoenix, Tucson, Pima County, and Maricopa County. And the proportionality, just to give you an idea of how Mesa did, it was of the 90 million that they received, 55% or 50 million is going towards public safety.
Okay. So also, on my same vein that I don't trust governments, so Pinal County has a lot of money. We're in Pinal County. Are they going to only use it in unincorporated areas? Or can we get some extra Pinal County money, too? How can we look into that? I mean, it's about time they start paying attention to us as well.
We'll definitely look into that. This revenue stream is definitely coming in just per capita. So their proportionate is their per capita of the unincorporated area. Does that make sense? So their unincorporated area is getting 100... What's the number, 115?
Yeah, I could pull up.
Dollars per person, and we're getting our proportionate, same number, 115, I think, 115 per person.
So they're only truly...
Getting revenue.
Unincorporated county residents that their number is based on. We're the incorporated city residents that our number. So our number... Our people aren't double counted in the county number.
Which is different than property taxes, which when we pay property taxes.
Right.
I mean, it's pretty simple, Jeff. The answer would be no.
No, right, no. They have theirs just for their unincorporated area, and they've got 27 million for their proportionate share.
So Matt, do you have the number that Mesa, Maricopa, Pima, what they got?
I have the listing of all of the smaller communities. I don't have the number of the Mesa office. Alon, do you remember the Mesa number?
I just wanted... I want you guys to tell us the number.
Mayor, Alon Valander, Senior Economic Development Specialist for the city. Mesa received 90, about $90 million directly from the federal government. I believe City of Phoenix was in the range of about 200. I'm not sure Maricopa County, Tucson, or Pima exactly, but those two, that's the approximate range they're in.
And that was... Like, there was like $1.75 per capita or something like that, wasn't it?
It was a higher per capita.
They had a higher per capita.
So in essence, just to... I asked that question because we got basically between, somewhere between 65 or 75% of what the large cities got per capita. It just... That just boils my heart.
Yeah, and when the governor's office had a discussion with the cities when they announced this, many, many cities brought up, many mayors, mayor...
It just reiterates my point of we need to make sure we have the same issues that the big cities, the counties have, and we are continuously...
Passed over.
There you go. I'm just going to use passed over, getting the short end of the deal. I had a South Dakota term there I was going to use, but... Anyway, I just wanted to make that a point out there.
Nobody lives in Maricopa.
People that are watching this, that what we... $4.8 million sounds like a lot of money, but we have a huge impact upon our city that our citizens and our businesses and the city has had to deal with. And sometimes because we didn't even have a choice to deal with them. And so now we get to... We will use the money the most effective and efficient way that we can, but...
Here's another example. You know, the city sits on the board of the Mesa Gateway Airport, and they receive $20 million. And the airports are just... There's no money coming in. So they're at risk of closing. So their plan is just to sit on that money and keep open. Otherwise, the alternative is just close it down because nobody's flying anywhere yet. So they're just taking a cautious approach to it.
We certainly have concerns about a major change in the gross... You know, our economy and revenue impacts coming in the future years as well.
Yeah, and it's our city. Like, we're two years behind, right, from that budget, or...
Yeah.
So we're going to feel this in two years from now for the city, so...
Let's not forget that part, too.
Yeah, is it possible to use later for that?
And we'll get answers to some of those questions. We're not sure.
Mesa has like a 20 million for small business grant program or 22%, 10 million or 11% for food distribution, 2.6 million or 2.88% for emergency funds, those types of programs or policy objectives in this, in their CARE Act.
And just back to Brian's point earlier, before the county discussion was the emphasis of, I wanted to make sure we have a feel for the council that sometimes up to 50% is dedicated towards public safety and making sure that things are taken care of there. I just wanted to see if there's... You know, as we bring ideas back, if that's kind of in line, do you all feel that is a needed focus as well? I assume the answer is yes, but I just wanted to check in and make sure you heard his point about the public safety part of it.
Anything else we can do tonight?
Matt, anything else we were thinking of starting out tonight on this one?
No, unless there's any other specific ideas, things that you want us to really focus in on and bring ideas back. I mentioned some, Councilman Struble and the mayor mentioned, Brian. If there's any others that you really want us to focus in on, that's what we'd need to hear tonight. And of course, individually, if you have ideas, thoughts later.
I'd be interested, and we do this sometimes and compare. I'm not saying this is the analysis that we do, but in different areas of public policy, sometimes you look to your comparator, comparator...
Did you...
Organizations like Maricopa or other cities, yeah, other cities and towns, yeah.
Catch my suggestion that we have this on every agenda from here going forward in case there's any news, just like we do a, you know...
Yep, that's a big...
And when it comes down to where we need to literally sit down and discuss how, where, when, and why, then I'd like to see it on a work session first because that's going to take some time.
Yeah.
Okay, we're good. Yeah, that's a good start.
All right, I think that's all we can do on that tonight. So item 11, council direction to staff to create a draft comprehensive noise ordinance. Councilmember Schroder.
Okay, so last time this was brought up, there was some questions about what particular ordinances that were in there that came from which particular city, town, or county. Joel has put this out here, did a great job putting it all together and letting us know where each individual particular ordinance came in from. And I guess now it's back to, you know, falls back in our court. So with the proposed ordinance seeing here, is there anybody that has any sort of revelations about it that they want to share?
Whenever...
I have a question. When we ask where they came from, we also ask about costs, how many departments had noise things, readers. We ask a lot of questions about the readers themselves and all of that. And so really, I like the way you put it all together. That was very cool, but it didn't answer all the questions that we had asked. I need answers to those. I don't feel ready to say much of anything until I understand. How many departments have and use decimal readers? What's the cost of the equipment? What kind of training is necessary? How often do they have to be recalibrated? How many court cases have been filed and these particularly... Two out of the five don't appear to have them. They may, but I didn't see it in the ordinances. I didn't see any reference to it. Have they had problems with cases because they didn't? Or have the ones who have these readers, have they filed cases and been so much more successful, et cetera?
So I would throw out there, there's training on breathalyzers and radar guns, so probably be the same.
I understand. I just... I'm just curious if...
Are there any other examples like that? I mean...
If we're going to put the time and the money into something like this, I think we need to know all there is to know about it first, especially in this time when we're sitting here with a budget that is cut to the bone. We're not even giving our employees a raise. I think we need to be very diligent about researching this whole thing and come to the conclusion that it is a good thing for this city or it is not a good thing for this city. But I think we need all the information in order to do that.
You're referring to the decibel meter?
Yeah, because you have decibels in this.
Now, did not Kelly Townsend pass where we are going to have to start using these things, did she not?
No.
That go up to legislation?
This blew up because of COVID. It never got out of the house.
The Senate scrapped everything.
Yeah, everything went down. So if...
Not to say that's going to get back up and running.
If this bill goes back in a special session or in the next legislative session, if they drop this bill, then anything we do is moot because we will have to follow exactly what the state says. And that's another thing to keep in mind. Do we write all this out and do all of this and then in six months end up having to scrap it because the state has decided like they did with fireworks? We did that on fireworks. We wrote out that great ordinance. It was wonderful. And it wasn't six months before the state dropped a bill, passed it, and we had to completely scrap ours. Just it just didn't make any sense anymore, not with the state bill, since the state is the government that is over our heads.
Under our feet.
Under our feet, excuse me. I'm sorry. Unfortunately, we can't walk on it. So, yeah, I have some major concerns.
So because the... Now, mind you, when this was put together, this decibel bill was in full force. It was going up until the...
Yeah, things have changed.
Issue. So you're suggesting that because the decibel beater bill is in limbo, we should not even have this in our ordinance at all?
I'm suggesting that we find out the answers to these questions, and at that point, we determine if a bill's going to be dropped or not. And we can find that out. That's pretty easy to find out whether that bill's going to get dropped again. And if it does, I'd suggest we wait. Otherwise, it's moot. You know, I had a couple of questions on the bill itself. Not the bill, I'm sorry. My head's somewhere else. Why are there two time differences in the rural nights on page eight? I didn't get that. I haven't got it open, so I can't point to it. Did I read it wrong or is it there that there's two different?
Well, the timelines, if I may, Mayor.
Yes.
Councilmember. I think the timelines are because the decibel reading is different. So the decibel level's different for certain hours. I think that's what you're looking at.
Well, yeah, but the hours, the hours cross. You've got 65 from 10 to 7, and then you've got 60 from 9 to 7. So if somebody is at... You see what I mean? If they're at 65 at 9:30 because it's...
I think I got you on this problem. So, right, so if you look at the commercial or business item, there are three, and then...
Do they cross?
No, see, the commercial business slash industrial, see, I think it's just been...
I see where the industrial goes.
This should be, you know what I mean? So these two are because you got industrial, but you don't have...
Right, that's 70.
Right, but there is no other timeframe. So then it'll go, then you drop back down to here. So this should actually be up here.
Ah, so this should be there.
Right, right, right. That should be under industrial and these two.
Gotcha. That makes more sense. Gotcha. Thank you. I looked at that and tried to figure that out. Thank you very much.
All right, Chip's been waiting patiently.
Okay.
Okay, one of the things that, you know, and I, first off, from my hearing, if I had to go out and make a judgment on a call for whether a sound is, I'll say, aggressively loud or whatever, would be very, I'm going to say, difficult. And with a sound level meter, you remove the personal hearing of the person that's involved. You have a piece of equipment that will measure the sound. And to me, it is a, I'll say, a better way to measure sound versus, I believe, the sound is too loud. And so I personally think, you know, whether this bill goes through the state legislation or not, I still believe that we need to work forward with the use of a piece of equipment that is neutral, that can be used. Yes, you can pick up your iPhone and get an app for... Yes, you can pick up your iPhone and get an app for sound.
Can you? I didn't know that.
Yes, but that is not certified. And so, it, to me, there is, you know, I look at it as being a person that has worked in the calibration and repair of test equipment and how I know that it's very rigorously controlled and meeting certain standards that are set up by nationally, and they're all compared to that. So, therefore, that is a neutral party that is making a determination. And that eliminates the, I'm going to say, the complaint from a neighbor that the neighbor's over there pounding on his drums at 8 o'clock at night is just, you know, I can hear it and it bothers me. Where if we can go out there and verify that at the property line, that that noise is below this level, there's no basis for the complaint.
I understand. You phrased it very well. I think that there are certain situations where that may or may not work well, i.e. barking dogs, because dogs bark when they want to. And oftentimes, as soon as an officer gets there, the dog seems to find his way into his kennel. And as soon as the officer leaves, he starts in again. And those are situations that are not addressed. And I'm kind of wondering, because on page eight, nine, we blame the complainant if they call three times and there's not any definite hearing on the part of the officer or his decimal reader doesn't pick it up or what have you. And barking dogs particularly, you may not get that. So, I have a problem with placing the blame on the, on the complainant without some phraseology in there that gives the officer discretion to know that, hey, I've had other complaints from this block. And just because I don't hear it doesn't mean it didn't happen. So, I, I will, you know, note this, jot it down, and I'm not going to say this is your third complaint with no validation.
Didn't we work on some, say, some.
We have mediation.
Yes.
Yes.
On barking dogs.
But if there's, if the officer can ascertain that the dog is barking at that particular moment, it says in here that the third time that person calls in there and the dog or the officer doesn't ascertain that the dog is barking, that that person can get fined.
Yeah.
I mean.
Okay, I can understand that part of it, but I, I'm wanting to make sure that, number one, that the city is not going to be involved into a neighbor-to-neighbor feud, which so many times this has happened in it. And when, you know, I'm even going to pick on the barking dog issue on it.
It seems the safest one to pick on.
Yes, it is. It is something that we've worked with a way to work through that problem. You know, maybe some wording in there that would.
Right, some kind of phraseology to take that onus away if the officer ascertains that there probably was a problem.
Yeah.
So, I'd like to say something. I very much like having our noise ordinance all in one place. I think that's a great idea.
Amen.
And I think it needs to be referenced in the different areas. As I recall, in my last six years here, we've had two major noise complaints. One was the drummer, one was the ongoing issue.
Yeah, there's some others.
Barking dogs, I spoke to the committee or the commission on that, and they've really resolved all of the issues they've had. I'd like to hear from the chief, what issues do the officers have? Because these happen at night. It's not that co-compliance is there and they can respond. But what kind of issues do we have generally? I threw a couple of parties where the police showed up. I did.
There we are, there's a violation.
There we are, right there.
I'd like to know where these decibel reader numbers come from because a subdivision or a rural area down by the freeway is going to have louder noise than Los Dutchmen in east of 88. It's, there's different sounds. So, where did these numbers actually come from? And are they applicable to our community being more rural?
Those particular numbers came from Pinal County.
Yeah, but where did they get them from? Are these national numbers or is this research they did? Where did this actually come from? And Chip brought up a really good point in our budget meeting because we put in $4,000 to buy these, but his brother got out of a speeding ticket because the officer wasn't trained on that particular radar gun. So, are we going to go through this exercise? And how much is the training for each officer? And how often are we going to have to have it? Are we going to, you know, the sensitivity of the machines? And do they have to be recalibrated every time they're taken out? There's just a lot of information that is unknown at this point. And I very much like keeping what we have right now until we find out what's going to happen at the state because we could put a lot of work and effort into this for not, if the state goes ahead and says we have to do this.
I think the police officer's job is different than it was 20 years ago. They have to be trained on radar guns, on breathalyzers, on tasers, on body cams. And this will just be one more electronic tool that they're going to have to, I think, someday get used to, so.
We have the chief address.
Yeah, so the chief is ready to, I mean, not the decibel one, but probably be ready to talk about the environment, yeah.
Sorry.
Mayor City Council, I was really hoping I wasn't having to come up here and talk about this.
You didn't think we'd let you off the hook, did you?
Absolutely not. I really don't have that much information on it. When, the limited information I do have on it, there are very few agencies that are carrying decibels. We have so many other things that would be more a priority. But one of the negative things you do have and we do commonly have is when, I think this would become more of a problem when an officer goes to a scene and does his decibel thing and somebody brought up that they didn't hear it. The neighbor's still unhappy about it. So, the officer, again, is put between the dog and the fire hydrant to make a decision. And it's usually the citizen that should be attending the court session. And this, from what I look at, this is basically a civil infraction anyhow. So, it's basically like a parking ticket. The priority level on this is going to be so low that I think it'd be basically an unforceable thing. And what will get us complaints that the police department is not doing their job with the decibel reader, either because when they got there, they couldn't get a reading or when they got there, whatever the finding was on it. But there is a process where they have to go into court. And I'm not sure what the guidelines, what the court would be. I haven't seen any court hearings on it and I haven't spoken to the city attorney about it. But like anything else, it would be at the training, would there be expenditures? And, I mean, ultimately, you all are the ones that are responsible. And I can hear that the citizen be complaining about, why can't you enforce the noise? The drummer, the loud muse, the vibrating bass, whatever it might be, the loud motorcycle, the jack breaking, whatever is on the 60 by Dolce Vita. And we'll be hearing from, probably the officer that talked to your city council, they passed this. So, I pass it back to you. And whatever you tell us to do, we will do.
But is this a large problem or is it a small problem? And I understand Friday night would be different from, my parties were on Saturday night.
I mean, I would have to, and answer, I would have to go back and pull what we have as far as those noise complaints. And I think overall, they're relatively low. But it could also be something where it's just another one of those things that the officers would try to resolve through the normal process between talking to neighbors, turning things down and get the compliance thing, which is what we always try to do. But I think in consideration of what I've seen over the years, I mean, we've responded to noise complaints, light complaints, spotlight complaints, barking dogs, whatever they are, all the time. And they usually get resolved before very many people get charged. And it's usually somebody brought about, the neighbor-to-neighbor confrontation. We try the mediation. The mediation process works out sometimes for those people that want to cooperate with neighbors and be neighborly. And then you always have the other people that can't get along no matter what you do. So, it's one of those things that whatever you all decide we're going to do, we'll end up doing. And if we can be successful on it, fine. But I don't think it's that big of a priority that we, I'm not a big favorable person making new laws that we can do what we have already without making new laws that are already there.
We keep using dogs as an example, but I think where we see it most is with bars, restaurants, and parties, though, so.
But if it's still.
Recently, I think you have that, yes.
Yeah, if it's still a low priority, that is numbers that we could have when we start looking into the greater details of this.
I mean, there's a lot of ramifications to it that I don't know what they are, but I would have to call to my peers. And I think if I'm not recalling too long ago, I did send something out and there was, out of the 15 or 20 that I did send them out to, there weren't really very many that are using the decibel reader. But I'm not even sure what Pinal County does. And I can't even, I can't realize that Pinal County would even respond to these types of calls.
So, these numbers came from Pinal County?
Yes.
We could find out how they, yeah. And it'd be good to know where, how they, is that some national standard where it came from?
Let's put it this way, normally, in a normal talking communication between two people standing approximately three to three and a half feet apart, your voice is running about 60, between 55 and 60 dB. So, that's what it's based on.
So, if a normal voice is at 60 and for commercial businesses, they can go up to 65? So, an employee yelling at another employee would make that go over the decimal reader? And then what?
Well, that would be in that three and a half foot distance. If you put it at the property line, it's going to be way down from there because the voice travel, it decreases with distance. It does.
So, I think that's where I stand on it. I like what we have. I like it all being in one spot, but I think we need a whole lot more detail before we change any of this. And I'd like to know the successes of these decibel readers. And has anybody taken one to court and actually passed? Because why spend $4,000 when we haven't given the employees a step up in pay for something that's not going to be of any great benefit to the community?
Your honor. Yes, I think it's more, so, I think we're kind of dissecting this decibel meter a little bit too much. I think it falls behind, it's a tool at the disposal of the officers to use when needed to maybe take away any doubt, maybe have a more solid grasp of what's going on around them. I'm not saying, like you're saying, you know, officer doesn't need to break out a piece of equipment if he walks up and hears a dog barking or he's hearing a band playing in someone's garage. I mean, any person can hear these things. But I think it's kind of designed to where, you know, it gets to the point where it becomes very gray area. And if it helps our officers to have a tool like this at their disposal to do their job, I don't know why it would even be a matter of contention. I mean, not that he wouldn't necessarily have to use it every time he goes anywhere, but if he comes across a situation.
It could also help innocent offenders too, people that are accused of being loud, which aren't, so.
But I would think if they had this and you have decibel numbers plugged into this ordinance, that the officer would have to use it. That would be a must. I mean, you can't pull somebody over for DWI and not, you know, test them. You can't just say, well, you were drunk and walk away, you know, wish you them a ticket. You've got to test them. You've got to prove that.
That, that's, I mean, that's a.
Is that true?
Well, that's a pretty steep analogy between the two of them, DUI and tone-making.
Well, I know, but I'm just, I'm talking about an instrument. You were talking about an instrument that they would not have to use. They could decide whether to use it.
Well, so is pepper spray, you know, so are handcuffs.
Only if you're talking about an unruly person that has to be subdued.
Or you're talking about a situation you're in where you realize that you need to use something, an instrument at your disposal to be able to have a grip on the situation, to know for sure what's going on.
Kind of digressed, but I see your point. I don't necessarily agree with it, but I do see it. Okay?
We're halfway there.
Yes. And if we have a chief of police saying it's a very low priority, are we going to listen to our chief of police at all? Or are we going to just disregard the fact that the man who's over all these officers says it's a very low priority, especially now? I mean, it seems to me that we ask him for his opinion and now we're just saying, oh, well, we really didn't want it.
No, no, that's not, that's not what I'm saying at all. And I welcome his opinion for sure. For something that's.
Council direction to staff item tonight is.
So, direction to staff. Do we need to know what the state, House, and Senate, there's talk that they may come back for a special session? And ratify everything? They think they could do it in one day, which was why I couldn't believe why they didn't just stay there and vote on these things. If it doesn't, does it go another full year?
Well, it depends on how many special sessions they decide to have. They can have more than.
And they keep having special sessions until they get to it?
They can.
Yeah, they're.
They can, if that's what they wish.
So, we don't know that answer yet.
So, Robert, you've kind of, I'm going to leave this up to you on what you would like to see done since you brought it forward.
Well, to go along, you know, as far as some of the concerns brought up, I think we should, we should find out if whether or not this is going to be voted on as far as.
Can we leave, can we leave this hanging? Just let it table and then?
Find out what happens with that legislation?
So, that would be our direction to staff then is.
Go ahead, Joel, but I, yeah, I mean, that's.
I think you need direction to staff. Tell staff what you're looking for and then bring it back at a certain date. And you could bring it back many times if you want, if we don't have the information.
So, is this currently all in one place? Did we move that yet?
So, that, yeah, so that is.
That has to be part of the direction to staff?
Well, there's no direction to staff to do any ordinance yet, that's why.
No, no, I know.
But yes, yes.
But our noise, do we have that now located in one spot? No, still all broke out.
Correct.
Okay, so that can be part of the direction to staff, to put all of our current noise ordinance in one spot?
If you want to, keep in mind, there is a little complication. If you're doing anything involving zoning, anything you change in the zoning code has to go back to planning and zoning. So, they would have to look at it and they'd have to give a recommendation. So, then it would come back to you on that part of the ordinance.
So, you're talking about commercial and industrial and that kind of thing?
Let me give you an example, the CUP, there's some restrictions on noise for CUP. So, if you want to change the CUP noise regulations, you would, it's under Article 1-16, I think, of the zoning ordinance. You would have to bring it back, first, you directed it to go to planning and zoning. And then they'd have to, they'd have to look at it, they'd make a recommendation. So, there is some additional time that this will take and another body that would look at whatever you're looking for for a CUP, for example. Maybe PNC would have a different opinion on it. I don't know.
So, but if we don't want to change anything, just put it all in one spot? It still has to go back to PNC?
If you change any part of the zoning ordinance. No, it. If you change any part of the zoning ordinance, no, whenever you make a-
If we lump it together-
And where are you going to put it?
That's considered a change.
Well, it depends where you're going to put it. If you're going to put it all in-
Under noise.
Under noise, just a general noise. Well, if, if it doesn't change the substance of the, of the, of a, of a ordinance under zoning, then I'd argue, no, you don't have to bring it back to PNC.
Just so someone that wants to look up our noise ordinance could type in noise and see what we currently have, but no changes?
Well, once again, if there's something, if you put it in a separate section under Volume One, which is not the, the planning and zoning area, you can do that, you can create a noise ordinance. But then you're going to have to change in the CUP provision that references that noise ordinance. So yes, you would have to change that. You'd have to make the reference. So if you make a reference to it in, from the zoning ordinance, yes, you'd have to change it, that's-
So if we left the current, the way we have it now, under each section, let that the same, but went ahead and also combined it just for ease in one section by itself, would we then have to go all the way through PNC?
If you want that enforceable, like for a CUP, the answer is yes.
Even though it's in the CUP?
CUP in ways.
Even though it's still there?
Well, decimal readers are not there, so, but-
No, we're not talking about that. We're just talking-
Yes, we're not going to change any-
If you don't change anything, and you're going to make a duplication of code and put it in a new noise section, then you're good.
It was actually the first conversation that Councilmember Schroeder noticed, as he went through best practices of other cities, is that there, yeah, where's the noise ordinance, Brian? I said it was here and here. That's a, you know, I know that, that's a big-
Well, and, and to just make it the simplest, most clean cut, that if we leave it where it is, but have it as a combined noise all in one, then we don't have to-
Correct.
Then you've already started that process, and then as you have more dialogue, you can keep talking about it.
Okay. I didn't expect this to be the longest item of the night. So I'm going to call for a motion.
Do we need a motion or a Direction to Staff?
Just Direction to Staff.
A motion for Direction to Staff.
It's a motion.
Robert?
So not the motion that is on here, right?
No.
Because we're, did we decide that we want to kind of shelve this until we find out what the legislator's going to do?
So could we-
I'll make the motion. I move that Direction to Staff be as follows, that the noise ordinance that we have at this point in time contain all of the noise, Gail, help me here, you had, have-
To remain in each section it currently is?
Remain in each section, and also be pulled together as a single noise ordinance. And that the questions that were asked in this session, re, how many departments have the, the decimal readers, cost, how many court cases, et cetera, be answered, so that we can come back and determine whether we want to go further. That's it.
Do you want a date, like a when to bring that back?
Oh.
We leave it at Robert's discretion, if he can monitor this date and see, and...
Because this is pretty-
What date do you want to come back?
Mm-hmm.
Give it a month?
July seventeenth.
No, it's true.
It's too hot.
It's too hot.
Yeah, we'll all be loud.
Yeah.
Second meeting in July, first meeting in August.
First meeting in August.
Yeah, first meeting in August.
So we've, we wanted to, the motion was to find out what it would cost for these-
Well, who has them, have they taken it to court, that kind of thing, so that we know what we're getting into, and to consolidate what we have now. And then-
So the-
If we determine later to add all of those parts that you wanted to add with the decimal readers, et cetera, that can be another motion at a later time.
So the proposed noise ordinance, that's right here, is not being, we-
Not being addressed.
We are not addressing this?
No.
So as of right now, we are addressing the ins and outs of the deci-, the decimal meter, and then our current ordinances being all-
Consolidated, so that what you have there will fit right in when we decide.
Okay.
I need a second.
Second.
I need a second.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Councilmember Evans.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson.
[laughing]
I'm sorry, do we have a date if this is returning? My apologies.
Third or fourth would be the Monday and Tuesday in August.
In August, okay.
That's just Monday.
So.
I, I will, I will go ahead and say yes, in it, because we need to keep looking at it. So yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Councilmember Struble?
Ditto, Vice Mayor.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
I'm going to say no.
Five to one, motion passes.
Okay, selection of meeting dates, times, locations, and purposes.
Wow. Your Honor.
Yes.
Um, I move that an executive session, wait a minute, an executive session at six PM and a work session at seven PM for Monday, June fifteenth, 2020, and an executive session at six PM and a work session at seven PM for Tuesday, June sixteenth, 2020, be held at the City Council Conference Room and City Council Chambers, located at three hundred East Superstition Boulevard, Apache Junction, Arizona, respectively, and other meetings as necessary.
Second.
You notice the new city clerk changes words on us very subtly.
Yeah, I have to read it very carefully.
Okay, roll call.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Unanimous, Your Honor?
This is a time for the public to express requests, communications, comments, and suggestions. Each speaker must have already filled out a request to speak for him and handed it to the city clerk before the end of the city manager's report. All issues shall be presented in a professional manner without personal attacks. Under the open meeting law, the council cannot engage in discussion on the issues presented, but may respond to criticism and may direct staff to follow up with the speaker directly and or place this matter on a future agenda for council discussion. There's a three-minute time limit for each speaker. The first one is Bailey, Bailey or Adam Nolan, and we need your address, if we can.
Good evening. My name's Adam.
Bailey.
Nolan. We live at seven sixty South Wikiup, right on the corner of Wikiup and Broadway. We were in the process of building a fence, and we had a code compliance officer tell us that we were not using the correct material. And we just wanted to see if maybe we could get the material looked at, and just the, the code in general, to, to see if we could get it passed. There's other fences in Apache Junction that are already in place, that are identical to the ones that we're putting up. That's kind of why we went with it, because we already saw it around town, and we liked the look of it, so. And we've never done this before, so.
We can take those pictures and-
Okay.
And then I do believe this is the College, and it's sort of the same.
Can we get that on the record? Could speak into, yes.
Um, so there is one of the college that has some of the same material, it's just the metal sheeting. There's houses around town that have the galvanized steel.
Which one is yours?
I'm not-
We can work on this one.
Okay. So ours is the one that, it's not complete yet, because we kind of stopped in the process when we got the notice that we can't build it. So it is kind of incomplete right now. Our neighbors is the more rusted one. It looks really, really nice. So we're just trying to go for that same look, very industrial looking. But, yeah, that's-
You have another minute?
We'll take a look.
You have another minute.
That's it.
Um, so apparently, from what we've been told, we actually met with Larry, he came over and took a look, took a look at the fence with us. He said that we would need to come and talk to you guys to see if maybe we can get it changed, to get it approved. There's kind of a gray area in the code itself, saying that it's an unapproved building material for the fencing. So I don't, I'm not too sure how that actually works. I don't know if there's a way to get it approved, or if it does have to be changed in its entirety.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
All right. Great job.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Caitlin Beasley.
Okay, this is my first time doing this, so I have no idea what I'm doing, so bear with me. What I do, I'm actually a senior in high school, I'm only seventeen, but my focus is animal welfare, because people tend to overlook animals. You okay?
Jennifer, do we need the address, if we have it on the sheet?
We're good, Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I've always been an advocate for animals, and I've personally helped over fifty animals in the community, mostly Mesa, very underfunded communities. People are unable to transport animals. So as soon as I got my license, that's what I wanted to do, I wanted to help animals. One of the, I believe it's an ordinance, ten eighteen seventeen, Section six two C was something that I noticed said, you have the licensing in rabies, which is required by state. A veterinarian has to give rabies. One thing that is a loophole in the system that actually I used to my advantage was, in Pinal County, you have to have animals that are registered through a veterinarian, because a veterinarian has to give the rabies license. You can get these at four locations, one of them including Pinal County or Paws and Claws. Something that I use to advocate myself, as someone that can bring animals to clinics and give a verbal or written agreement by the owners to have them altered, vaccinated, tested, whatever, I can use my resources through, like, the laws that are already in place. So I'm not, like, requesting any more laws, because people have a hard time following them anyway. But there has to be some kind of way to enforce them, so that way people in the public can help get others recognized. So many of the situations that I've helped in, people are underfunded, they don't have means of transport, they can't, they can't get the animals the care they need. I'm a resource for the public, I try to just help in any way that I can. I would like any kind of spay neuter resources or anything of the sorts. Unaltered animals actually have a higher impound fee, I don't know the exact fees, I think it's like fifty-five, rather than if an animal's altered, also spay neuter, with the noise ordinance that you guys were discussing, altered animals behave a lot better. It doesn't necessarily change their overall personality, but can alter, less spraying for cats, less barking for dogs. It's just, everyone is a lot calmer, and it's, prevents more unwanted litters, and it's just, it's just overall better. So any kind of resources for Apache Junction, altered tails is one of the biggest things for Mesa. ADLA is also a big program. I got over thirty cats altered for free, because I'm, go to three schools, I have no funding, so that's what I do. So, yeah.
Thank you.
That's all I got.
Well, thank you very much. And you're very brave.
Good.
We can also talk about CLI, right, and make sure- Is Chief Barber still here?
Yes.
Yes, okay, I'll let you go first, since the meeting's drawn on so long.
Sorry for being here late. I was at the briefing meeting for the Southwest Area Team One. So just a quick brief on the fire, we had the transition from the Type Three team to the Type One team. Alan Sinclair's the incident commander, he lives in Apache Junction. He used to work for Tunnel, Tunnel Mesa Ranger District. So updated the fire today, they flew it today, it was twenty-two thousand acres and some change. So just to kind of put people at rest, Apache Junction, just to kind of give you a quick overview, the Valley Resource, the Automatic Aid System, has every auto aid city, the twenty-three cities in the Valley, with a plethora of resources. In fact, just on the Last Judgment Fire, we had several, up to a couple hundred firefighters. Today they had three hundred and twenty-eight firefighters, that'll probably be over a thousand by next two days, and depending on if it ramps up, it could be a couple thousand firefighters. So they're working, burning out on Highway one seventy-two, and to kind of protect the Elephant Butte area, they did evacuate that a couple days ago. Right now, they're not concerned with Queen Valley. We have zero concern with Pearlta, zero concern with Apache Junction or Gold Canyon. In fact, I can't imagine ever evacuating Gold Canyon. So the fire right now, there's only a little bit moving towards the northeast a little bit, just a finger, and now it butts right up against the Woodbury Fire last year. The issue is, with the Woodbury Fire, is with all the rains, you've still got three-foot grass. The grass burns very quickly, but it also goes very fast. But even if it was to go this way, it gets open area, and we can pick that up. So zero concern about that. So actually, they were burning along to protect Queen Valley today, and they're not, they're no longer concerned. So the team just moved into our training center with the old middle school and that we're at for a regional training center. So there's no, so we're working very closely with the incident management team. If anything breaks out, we have them, the Valleywide system, and our own system. In fact, they moved all our resources from Cave Creek and everywhere else to this fire. So, anyway, just to let you know that I'll keep you updated. Tomorrow on our website, there'll be a link to the, to the, the website for the Southwest Area Team One, and that way we can keep you updated by that way. But anyway, I know you can't ask me questions, but feel free to have Bryant send me an email if there's any concerns, but we're in good hands.
I know we're not supposed to ask questions, because if we were, I'd ask about the one that just started on top of the world, but I can't ask that.
Yeah, and if, if you had asked me that, then I could answer by, we were concerned about the road being shut down. They, they did get a start there, but the incident management team wasn't that concerned about it. But I'll get more information on that in the briefing tomorrow morning at six AM. So they're at Pearlta Elementary School, as well as our regional training center.
Same Incident Command, same Incident Command Unit, or diff-
I'm sorry?
On the two different fires, are they the same?
Yeah, no, it's a different incident command, but they have the ability, the resources that way.
Keep us posted, Mike. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Gilbert Ruiz.
Hello, good evening. I appreciate the opportunity to address the mayor and the City Council. My name is Gilbert, and I live on thirty-six to one east Second Avenue, here in Apache Junction. And I'm here to discuss that specific property that we just purchased. My wife Kelly and I, we purchased this property around two years ago. Just a little bit of research that I did, years ago, there was a road called Wagon Wheel Road that ran north and south from Junction Road to Fourth Avenue. This road was later abandoned in the mid nineteen eighties, and all the property owners on either side of the road, the east and west of that road, twelve property owners in total, they filed the necessary paperwork, and they acquired the ownership of the land that was used for that road. Currently, our property is the only one that has not acquired that small little strip of land, which is thirty-three feet by seventy-five feet, which was once the Wagon Wheel Road. We, we recently purchased a building that we were planning to install for storage, where that little small strip falls. However, we had known knowledge that that strip of land was not ours. We just recently found out upon taking steps to pull permits for the project. We plead to the City of Apache Junction that it grant us the same opportunities as it did to twelve other property owners, and allow us to acquire this small strip of land. We thank you for your time, and have a great evening.
Thank you.
Donna Carr.
Donna Carr, I'm a Apache Junction resident. I think you brought up some of my concern, which was for the CARE Act. I guess I look at the small businesses, and I feel bad for them, and one of them would probably be the AJ Gold Canyon News, which just went out of business beginning of last month. month. And helping them out, I think, would be a tremendous thing for Apache Junction, considering they've been in business for so long here. The other thing is, is you look at the fact is that if you're concerned about who's going to run away with your money, is that I know that Pinell County has, I believe it's the CORA program, that helps people, but they also put a limitation on, you can't sell your house for five years. So, maybe you can't sell your business for five years if you're worried about them running away with your money. Now, I guess I'm stumbling for words, is, is also the noise ordinance thing, is I think people know when they're being loud, so I don't think that they need a gizmo to be told, "Hey, by the way, you're being loud." Says it right here on the gizmo. I mean, and I know, I've had problems with neighbors in the past, and I called the police, they had no problem coming out there, showing up, they dealt with the problem. I mean, I had a problem with a neighbor who had a dog that was constantly getting out of the yard. I must have called three or four times. Finally, the dog ran out of the yard and attacked a dog that was on a leash going down the street. But the fact is, is a little gizmo has not, I mean, your ears can hear. You can tell whether you're being loud or not. I think it's a waste of money. Thank you.
Okay, we have a strange request now. We had someone that could not make it to the meeting, and they submitted one by email, and Vice Mayor Wilson is gonna read it. This is from Jane Brown.
Okay, I want to do basically a quick overview on it. And it was concerning the Idaho and Tempe area, where the building of the 12 homes on the two and a half acres. And she is saying that overall, this is not good for the community, and she says that this is a low-density area. And of course, we have primarily addressed most of her concerns when we discussed it in the open meeting tonight. And so, wanted to let everyone know that, yes, we do have a, an email that came to us and was, when, was addressing an issue that we were talking about. And with her email, as well as some other comments that were made, as we moved out that, out of the consent agenda and addressed it separately.
Okay, anyone care to respond to any of the others? I think, Brian, on the, on the fence issue, you're gonna look into that, and I would like us to be as helpful as possible on that.
Certainly. Yeah, I think we got a little situation where Larry's asked us to bring it to your attention, and we'll definitely look at that.
Anyone else? So, if not, then we will be adjourned.